Good evening. My name is Mark Giddings. I'm the Vice Chairman of the Planning Board of the Town of Concord. I am calling to order the August sixth meeting of the Planning Board. I need to do a roll call for those in attendance. Linda Miller.
Here.
Abby Flanagan.
Here.
Rob Almeida.
Here.
Sue Felschner.
Here.
And our Town Planner Elizabeth Hughes is with us as well. So the first item on the agenda is a site plan review, public hearing for the Bank of America to increase the number of exterior light fixtures by more than ten percent at fifty-two Main Street. The applicant has asked us to continue the public hearing to seven thirty P M. on August twenty seventh and accept the time extension to August thirtieth. I need a motion to do that, please?
I so move.
A second? Thank you. I'll take a roll call. Linda Miller.
Yes.
Abby Flanagan.
Aye.
Rob Almeida.
Yes.
Sue Felschner.
Aye.
And I, Mark Giddings, vote yes as well. So that will be on our agenda for the August twenty seventh meeting. It's seven thirty P M. Next on the
Let me
Yes.
Just let me double check. Is that what I put in the agenda memo? I just want to make sure the time's correct.
That's what it says. It says hearing to seven thirty P M. on August twenty seventh.
Perfect. There you go. Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is, oh, I, we have to wait till seven thirty. So in the meantime, we will address some administrative business. First item on administrative business is public comment. General public comment is limited up to fifteen minutes with no more than three minutes allocated to anyone's speaker. General public comment is limited to items that are not on this agenda. Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, I shall move on to the second, which is a planning board meeting schedule. You receive the tentative schedule for three-week meeting schedule. We need to discuss whether we want to do that or not. And the time for implementation. So I open that up to other members to tell me what you think.
I see. I see that Andrew has joined us.
Oh, hello, Andrew.
Sorry about that.
No, you got it. So we're on to administrative business. And we're on the planning board meeting schedule is what I've asked everybody for. And Andrew Boardman, our chairman, has joined us. It's all yours, Andrew.
Awesome. Um, thank you for taking over.
I'll send you the bill.
I'm, I'm just gonna, I completely spaced on it. I was just doing dishes. So, um, yeah, so the three-week agenda, I mean, I, I don't know if anyone had any other comments associated with what was proposed. Right now, the idea is it's not exactly three weeks. It varies a little bit depending on other um, meeting schedules, I think, to that it doesn't overlap with, um, of other meetings that the, um, Planning Division supports. I can't remember Elizabeth mentioned, but I cannot remember what it was for the life of me. But there was, there were a couple of weeks, which it, it just caused a little bit of, um, a little yo-yoing, but, but the idea being that it's still meeting less frequently than we currently do. And, and giving them more time for, for their own purposes. So I don't know if anyone had any comments or thoughts or concerns. Obviously, we can adjust as we go.
And will we be doing, um, sorry? Uh, Zoom each of those meetings? How are we going to structure the meetings themselves?
That's a, that is a good question. Um, if we're going to less meetings, the question came up of whether it may be better for us to just meet in person if it's, if it's doable because it is more productive. Um, and obviously if people can't, then we can, we can figure it out from there, but, um,
Okay.
Yeah, that, that was just the thought. Um, and then, then that way, when we do meet, it's, you know, it's everybody in one room and it's, it's a little more fluid and, and can, um, move forward well.
I think it's a good idea to me, you know, for us to meet in person, but, uh, you know, also have the option for, you know, for what someone to zoom in, you know, if they have to, you know, just in case there's some, you know, someone's doing the dishes, you know?
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I don't think the technology component's gonna go away.
Yeah.
I think it's just, it's just the idea being that it's, you know, if somebody has to, obviously, if someone has a COVID exposure or any number of reasons why you just can't be physically nearby.
Exactly.
It makes sense.
And of course, if there was a storm or something, we would still have the option to go all Zoom, but I'm cool with the idea of meeting in person in general.
Cool. I don't know. Anyone else have any thoughts? I don't think we need a vote or anything. I think we just pick it up and go with it. Awesome. Okay.
Well, just continue with your administrative business?
Yep. Uh, so the next thing is the potential, um, twenty twenty-five ATM zoning bylaw amendment, um, with site plan review. Um, so the board discussed the possibility of amending the ninety days, um, from the start of, from the receipt of application to the close of application. So then, um, Elizabeth, do you want to take over with what the, what the concerns are?
Um, so as, um, the board discussed, I think it was back in June when you did your, um, your goals memo. Nine, ninety days from the receipt of the application. You know, three months is for a really complicated project that has multiple outside consultants or, or even one outside consultant. Um, three months doesn't work. And so we had originally talked about changing the timeframe to, um, so it's consistent with um, the language for a special permit. The, since, you know, since that time, um, you know, there's been more feedback and from the state on MBTA communities and the Attorney General on site plan in general, you know, site plan rules and regs and concerns. So I did, uh, send this, um, make a request that was granted to have this reviewed by Town Council. Uh, he's, he's on vacation this week. Um, but, uh, his initial thought was, um, he agreed with me that he thinks the Attorney General may, you know, raise a flag with this. Um, because not that Concord would do this, but there's three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns, you know, in the Commonwealth. But basically, um, giving planning boards the ability to de facto deny something by just keeping the public hearing open. Uh, and because site plan is different than a special permit. They are, they are not the same. So, uh, he said he'd get back to me next week. It may be, um, you know, a, a certain number of days to open the public hearing and then a certain number of days to take action and try and just build in, you know, a little bit more room for the board to take action. So he thought that might be an option. So, um, and, and, you know, realistically, um, if there was a really contentious applicant with a site plan and pushed the board, it can, it can stay the way it is. Um, the example I see with happening would be if it was a really complicated project. And, um, the board just didn't have all the information they needed. You know, they can, you know, deny a site plan saying that it's, you know, incomplete for, you know, these reasons, these reasons. The board did not have sufficient information to review this and that. And, and really in my experience, I can't think of an occasion where it got that contentious where an applicant, you know, did not agree to grant a time extension. So I'm, I'm not that concerned. You know, if, if Town Council comes back and says, yeah, with, with all the things that are going on with zoning right now, um, you know, this is, you know, this is at the bottom of the list and it's not critical. Um, cause as everybody knows, the governor signed the housing bill. And, um, we'll see what happens with what cities and towns need to do about the, uh, additional dwelling units. Um, because the board may be having to look at doing other changes to the A D, A D U bylaw beyond what we've been talking about with the Building Commissioner. And that's specifically around, um, by rights square footage, uh, which would be um, nine hundred square feet. Uh, there cannot be an owner occupant requirement for either the dwelling or the A D U. It also, I believe the, um, law talks about, um, can only require one parking space for the A D U. And, um, if the A D U is within a point five miles of, uh, commuter rail or transit stop, you know, there's no minimum parking requirement. Um, but sadly, the law also says that, uh, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities can promulgate, uh, guidelines. So we know how long that took with the MBTA communities. Um, so um, more to come on, uh, on that, on that one. But so I, you know, this is just there. It's, it was just something that the board talked about. So I will, uh, once Town Council gets back and gets back to me, um, the, the alternative may be just to have, you know, sixty days to open the public hearing and a hundred and eighty days to render a decision or something like that.
Yeah, Elizabeth, just a question. How, when we talk about a complicated or complex or contentious application at the, at the outer limits, kind of how long do those typically take?
Um, outer, outer limits about probably six months.
Yeah. So I wonder if it's something of like, you know, you know, within ninety days of the close of the public hearing, not to exceed a hundred and eighty days from the date of application without consent of the applicant. You know?
Yeah, I think, uh, yeah, I think there's a lot of options.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, to make that happen. Which is ninety days from the date of application to a decision, you know, is, is pretty complicated when it takes roughly two months to get an outside consultant on board.
If I can, um, raise something while we're on the topic of site plan review and, um, zoning bylaw amendments, um, based on what's been going on, um, over the last year and the discussions we've been having on site plan review for related to MBTA communities and just these general site plan review issues. I'd like to raise the idea of a couple of zoning bylaw amendments. Um, one would be to, um, change all, uh, business districts in downtown, um, uh, in downtown areas of town to forbid parking in the front of the building. Because this is a good idea for walkability. Pedestrians don't like walking between the street and the parking lot. It's very unfriendly. It makes you feel exposed. Um, I have some ideas about how we could state that, whether it would be by special permit or part of site plan review or just outright forbidden. There are, um, uh, issues to raise here. Uh, I don't want to go into really deep depth on it, but I wanted to float this idea to see if people have any interest in me pursuing this more at this time. Um, and, uh, the other idea would be, um, looking at what happened with, uh, the paparazzi and even the, uh, and Dunkin' Donuts, uh, they, well, that was a pre-existing building, but the paparazzi is going to be a one-story building fronting route two. This is terrible land use in terms of, um, uh, creating sprawl. And I was looking at all of our business districts and the height requirements are not very consistent and don't seem to me to be very well laid out. So I was thinking that we should regularize them to say a maximum of forty feet in all commercial districts. We could add something about a setback if it's next to, uh, uh, um, a residential district where it can't be more than thirty-five feet within some larger setback. There's actually a precedent for this in some industrial park districts. And, um, not only would it make it clear what is going on in our commercial districts, they'd be more similar to each other, uh, ideally, this should cover all the commercial districts, including limited business, medical, professional, industrial and business. But there's a lot of room there to decide exactly which ones would this apply to. Um, and the reason to say forty feet rather than thirty-five feet, by the way, some of the business districts, we probably all know now have less than thirty-five feet, which seems particularly odd, given that thirty-five is standard throughout residential districts. Um, the reason to say forty feet is often a commercial building needs a taller ground floor. But we could say forty feet or three stories, whichever is, or forty feet, but no more than three stories. And there is also precedent for this already in Concord, in some of our districts. So I could go into a lot more detail, but I just want to float this idea for now to see if people think it's worth me writing up a, a proposal, possibly even drafting some rough language.
I guess it would ultimately come down to a matter of bandwidth of whether with the other things that are going on that are I hate using the phrase known unknowns and unknown unknowns. Um, what will be coming down the pipeline with regard to the MBTA and other things that need to happen? Um, is there bandwidth to start opening up something that, um, it is arguably not perfect, but it isn't broken either. And, and that's the question I don't know. I mean, from my perspective, I can say that it would be better if the recent development on Route Two had a second story, but it's more dense than what was there before. So it's an improvement. And, and that's kind of the way things evolve over time. I don't see that as being a catastrophic change, but that's just me personally. Um, and I guess I can defer to other people what they think of.
I'm actually I'm actually more disturbed about the other notion, which is that, um, both the West Concord Shopping Plaza, um, and, you know, the strip mall and, um, uh, the Crosby's Development are getting old. And they don't seem to me to be in urgent need of being torn down and replaced. But I don't have any control over what any developer might think, and it would be a tremendous shame if they were to be redeveloped with parking in front rather than parking behind. And, and I, I do see your point though about bandwidth. I, I guess my question is more, should I start pursuing this? And then we'll see if we have time for it this year or not, or do we think that, no, absolutely not, not this year? And I see Elizabeth had something to say.
Um, I just wanted to have Andrew acknowledge that, um, Pat Nelson is on and joined. Um, but to, um, to choose comment, um, so the board is, um, we will have a contract finally executed, um, for Innis Associates to work with the board on amending the combined business residence district. And, um, so that may also provide information uh, as far as the topic of, you know, like parking behind um, a building. I, I do agree with both Sue and Andrew that the West Concord Shopping Plaza and Crosby's, um, definitely, you know, nearing the, you know, the end of their lifecycle and it would be a shame to, to redevelop it and have huge parking lots in the front. Um, but bandwidth, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm not sure with, um, it's not just zoning, um, and MBTA communities and MBTA community site plan rules and regs. Um, you still need to issue an RFP for, to update the subdivision rules and regs. Uh, and then we are, um, hopefully in the next two weeks, going to also have, I talked with Mark, the contract to look at updating the other sections of the zoning bylaw for parking. Um, so you know, there, there is a lot going on, but, you know, uh, a, a minor amendment for just Thorough Depot and West Concord's Shopping Plaza, I think, is in the business district. Um, you know, that's, that's something that can be investigated.
Okay. So I guess that, that sort of indicates that Sue, if you would like to start taking a look at that and seeing if there's something that is a quick fix to something like that, we can, we can see if we have time for it and we can maybe move forward. Um, without, um, yeah, without more, I mean, I think everybody agrees. So it's kind of one of those things that doesn't hurt to look at more stuff if we have time.
Great. I will, uh, continue working on that, see what I can draw up. And, uh, if we can do something with it, great. And if we can't, well, then at least we'll have taken a start on it for next year.
Right, right. No wasted effort there. And then that, um, I guess is the end of that administrative item. And then there's liaison and town planner updates. Any individual board member has updates at their respective committees? Or Elizabeth, we want to discuss your thing in advance of the seven thirty, um, public hearing.
You want to hear about Hanscom Field?
Go right ahead.
You probably all have read all about it and I, I'm no longer on that committee, by the way, because it conflicted with the planning board. So I'm still a little bit involved in it because I'm working on a project to understand the jet fuel tax situation. We get about six hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue from Hanscom Field for jet fuel tax. And it doesn't, it doesn't get audited or anything. It just, the check comes to us and nobody's really looking at it. So they've asked me to continue to do that. As you know, there was significant pushback on the Northfield project and it's been pushed back. Okay? We still don't know whether it's going to happen or not. They've invested something like seventeen million dollars in it so far, so they're not going to go away. But they've certainly been curtailed in what they're doing and they're reanalyzing the approach they're taking. And part of it was the general premise that they were doing it under was these ferry flights had no substantiation for it. Okay? Um, and that called into question the whole theory about why they were doing it. Massport was doing it because it was going to increase revenue, no question about it. Okay? But it was also going to significantly increase flight traffic in and out of Hanscom with all the resultant, you know, environmental and noise things that go along with it. So I think we'll just have to wait and see what they come back with. I think they, I've always believed they would come back with some sort of a scaled down version of it. Um, but I'll keep you posted. But for now, it's sort of on hold, if you will. Okay? That's the story.
Thank you. Um, does anyone else have any liaison updates? I do not have any.
I can, um, I went to the Economic Vitality Committee meeting and they continue to have an interest in secondary uses in industrial zones. Um, Elizabeth was at that meeting and, um, led a discussion on how zoning works. So, um, I don't know if, Elizabeth, if you, um, think any, uh, progress, uh, report other than to say that there continues to be interest in figuring out how to leverage some opportunities, um, for some of the existing industrial and retail, uh, companies here. What?
Um, I, I would agree there's, um, you know, there was definitely, uh, interest in, you know, investigating that. Um, I, I also think some of the conversation was, um, similar to one that the planning board has had. Looking at all of the industrial zone districts, why, you know, why do we have so many? And, um, whether that's something that should be looked at as well. I, I did not come away with a, a clear sense that the Economic Vitality Committee was a hundred percent going to move forward and, and try and develop a zoning bylaw. Um, but
Agreed. I, you know, I think, I, I think that, um, th- they would um, really have to work in concert, uh, with the planning board on that and be more specific in their requests. I think they also found out that some of the, um, difficulties, um, were not necessarily related to zoning, but things like, um, infrastructure, particularly available water sewer capacity in some of those industrial areas to even add accessory uses. So I think it's a little more multifactorial than just zoning. Um, and I think that also is, gee, do we want to change zoning if we really can't even um, uh, execute based on limited infrastructure. Um, so I, but I think the discussion will continue. I think, I think they'd like to, to move forward somehow. I don't know if it'll be this year, but maybe we can figure a limited way to, um, I just dissect that as well with some modest gain. Yeah. That's all.
Right. Thank you.
Um, I'll just quick plug that the next Concord Housing Roundtable is, um, Thursday, next Thursday, the fifteenth at five P M. on Zoom. Um, and I think one of the agenda items is going to be MBTA meeting zoning. So if anyone wants to join that, they're more than welcome to.
Okay. And with that is now seven thirty or seven twenty-nine, so we can move on. Our seven thirty.
Want to do the minutes?
Um, sure, we can do the minutes. That may make sense. Um, I, we did receive the minutes by email. Um, I did not have any comments, but I don't know if any were related to Elizabeth. And if not, we can move to accept the minutes as presented. Do I have a motion for that?
I move to, um, accept the minutes of May seven, twenty twenty-four as presented.
And wait a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Um, we'll do a roll call vote because that's required. Um, Alinda Miller?
Yes.
Mark Giddings?
Yes.
Abby Flanagan?
Aye.
Rob Almeida?
Yes.
Sue Felsen?
Aye.
Pat Nelson?
Yes.
And I, Andrew Boardman, and yes. So that's unanimously accepted the minutes. And with that, we can move to the seven thirty agenda item, which is a preliminary subdivision hearing, uh, in accordance with Massachusetts M G L forty-one, section eighty-one T. In the Town of Concord subdivision rules and regulations to review the preliminary subdivision plan application by Stamsky McNary for improvements improvement of a roadway and for the creation of two building lots at sixty-one B Walden Street parcel O two seven dash, no, O two seven four dash two. So with that, I will turn it over um, to either Elizabeth or the applicant, whoever's appropriate to talk at this moment.
Um, I think, um, Robert Melvin is here for the applicant.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Robert Melvin with Stamsky McNary, representing the applicant for, uh, sixty-one B Walden Street Preliminary Subdivision. Uh, I guess I will go ahead with a quick introduction. I was not the one presenting last time. Uh, my coworker, Dan Carr, had to fill in as I had a conflict, um, but I will be the, the primary point of contact for this project going forward. Um, so after talking with Dan, he, uh, let me know about, um, you know, the main topics of discussion at the last hearing. Um, it sounds like, uh, we were really just waiting for an engineering review to, to make any many big decisions here. Um, and we have since received that engineering review. Our office has reviewed, uh, all the comments listed and, uh, we do feel confident that we can uh, respond to and satisfy all of the comments, um, with a definitive plan, definitive subdivision design. Uh, most of the comments, uh, did have to do with, you know, more specific design questions that sort of come later. Uh, most of the comments, uh, did have to do with, you know, more specific design questions that sort of come later in the process. Um, and the one, one comment I did want to touch on here was, uh, regarding, um. The prohibition of the retaining walls within the right of way, um, that it could block future sidewalk on Walden Street. So, uh, we've gone ahead and, uh, did a quick redesign on our end. And have determined that we can propose the subdivision, um, as proposed without the retaining walls. Um, so that is no, no longer a worry. Um, and then, yeah, so the rest of the comments, we, we feel that we can satisfy with a definitive, uh, design here. And then I think, um, the other main point of conversation was the number of waivers that we're requesting here. Um, that would be, you know, reduction of the right of way width, a reduction of the pavement width. Um, a proposed T turnaround, uh, in lieu of a cul-de-sac and, um. Request of no sidewalk for the subdivision. Um. And, uh, we feel that all these waivers are sort of in relation to each other and really have a common goal. Uh, and that is to, you know, really reduce the amount of total impervious area on the project site. Uh, we can, we can accomplish this by a lack of pavement width, um. Uh, from the required twenty-two feet to eighteen feet. Um, and just a quick comment on that, we are providing two foot wide shoulders on either side of the road. Uh, so it would serve as a full twenty-two foot width. And, um, you know, also, uh, getting rid of the, the, um, required cul-de-sac and replacing with a T turnaround. We just felt it was more appropriate, uh, to go with a, a simpler turnaround design here for some, for a subdivision. That's only going to be, um, serving two, uh, single family dwellings. Uh, and we did receive comments from the fire department that have indicated that, uh, they are fine with our design. As long as we can prove, we can prove that it'll work for, uh, emergency vehicle access, uh, which we have provided, uh, detail on the plan for. And, yep, like I was saying, you know, the rest of these waivers we're requesting really just to reduce the overall pavement here. Um, and we feel it would really best suit this project and, and it really helps reduce the amount of fill required as well as total tree clearing. Um, so, uh, that's my two cents here. Uh, I'll, I'll happy to take any questions or comments that anyone else has.
No, thank you, um, for that. I think at this point, um. The most appropriate thing to do is for the board to discuss the list of waivers and determine whether, um, they are appropriate. And then we can guess opine on the whether, I, I forget how this is actually phrased, so I don't want to. This is the first one of these I've seen, um, but we are not granting a permit. It is just that we are approving a preliminary plan. The idea being that, um, they are able to move forward and invest time and resources in actually developing it. Um, and the assumption that these waivers will be granted. Um, one item to know that I always. Uh, think is good to look at a plan like this as, is that they have proven that it is actually buildable as a subdivision using. Substantial amount of infill and that that is not something that would be restricted in any way. So the idea being that this then becomes whether these waivers are an improvement over that physically possible plan. Um, and that, that's kind of the lens we're supposed to look at. Uh, Pat, have a question?
Yeah, I do. So, um, thank you. Um, so I'm just trying to get clear on this. The, the fire department or the emergency services have said that they're good with this. If you can, um, prove that emergency vehicles have suitable access. Is that what I heard?
Uh, correct, yes.
So. I don't know how we, how we deliberate or think about this if we don't know. If the fire department is going to say, yes, you, your plan is good. Totally. Great. This is fine.
I think that's Elizabeth can answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so, um, because this is a, a preliminary plan, it is not an approved subdivision plan. It's, um, it, it's basically a conversation between the planning board and the applicant on. Um, on these waivers and, um. What information the planning board would like to see as part of a definitive plan submission. Um, to support, um, these waivers. For the fire department, um, a standard condition would be for, um. From a preliminary plan to a definitive plan, when you do have comment letters from other departments would be that. The definitive plan submission, um, must address all of the issues and concerns raised in. Raised in the, um, Concord Public Works Engineering Division's comment letter of July fifteenth. All of the issues and concerns raised in the fire department's, uh, comment letter of July eighth. And what that will do as part of the definitive plan submission, the applicant's, uh, material will include. A, um, it's a, a fire truck template. Shown on the plan, how the, you know, how their apparatus will be able to do. Um, be able to turn around in that modified, uh, T turnaround.
Okay. So, okay, now I get that. It's because this is preliminary. And Andrew, I know you just explained what our task is. I think I need to hear that again. Um, but what I'm understanding is. We're, what are we looking at at the waivers if, if we aren't having the, in, you know, the different departments? Say this will work. I, I guess I'm a little confused on this still. So maybe Andrew, if you want to go through that again, or Elizabeth, if you want to.
I mean, uh, the, the only, basically from, from what I understood, again, this is also the first time I'm seeing this kind of thing. None of us on the board have seen a preliminary plan before, so it's worth checking that upfront for why our discussion might be a little more lumpy. Um, the, the idea is, is that any. This, any discussion that we have, so the ordinary, or an ordinary approval would be conditioned on everything. The fire department requires.
Right.
Everything that the, the, you know, the engineering division, it would, it would have, you know, agreement with all of those items and to address those things. What, um, what we have right now is a, basically, the, those groups took preliminary. Took the preliminary plan and said, hey, here are some things that we see in it that we need to address. You know, one, and one was something that, that I think Sue had brought up last time, which was the retaining wall in the street or in, in the right of way. You know, those kind of things where they said you can't do that. So that obviously would be a condition that we would not accept. Um, beyond that, it's really looking at the, the waivers. Requested and, and determining that they are appropriate. And I, I forget the exact phraseology that is used for waivers. I, I believe it's, you know, in the best interest of the town or, or something like that. Um, the, and, and, and how we review that site. You, you have a question, Sue?
I do. I want to see if, so am I understanding it correctly? If we, um, say yes to the waivers as part of the preliminary, approving the preliminary plan. Are we saying, um, yes to them in principle? But with the proviso that, you know, all the i's will be dotted and all the t's will be crossed and all the town departments. Uh, will sign off and we won't discover that there is some horrible things that nobody anticipated. So that the applicant is taking a risk that, um, something might go horribly wrong with their plan. But on the other hand, they wouldn't be putting it forward if they weren't reasonably confident that, at least with respect to these waivers. Their plan will fly. Am, am I getting that right? I saw Elizabeth nodding, so maybe I was getting that right? You're, you're, you're getting it right. Yes. Um, the, you know. The board moving forward tonight, um, and the words you're looking for, Andrew, is, um. A preliminary plan does not constitute approval of a subdivision. The preliminary plan application is to provide the applicant, the planning board and town departments. The opportunity to discuss and clarify development issues before the applicant incurs the expense of preparing a definitive plan. Um, the, the board should evaluate the proof plan, which is the full cul-de-sac plan. Um, the plan that can, um, be built, uh, without any waivers, uh, to the subdivision rules and regs. Um, and the preliminary plan that they have put forward with the requested waivers. To determine in a general manner whether the requested waivers are in the public interest. So, um, at the beginning, Andrew, you have the statement, you know, they've prepared a proof plan that shows a fifty-five foot wide right of way. A twenty-two foot wide pavement with two foot shoulders, a full, uh, full cul-de-sac. Um, the grading associated with that cul-de-sac, um, and how that plan could go forward without any waivers. So they have shown this, um. That's the proof plan. Then they've shown this preliminary plan and asking for those four waivers to the. Modified T turnaround instead of the full cul-de-sac, uh, reduced in the pavement with no sidewalk on one side. And then I can't remember the fourth one. Hang on.
Something about the street name?
No.
No, I think it was something, again, with the right of way or.
No.
Something.
Right. I think it was the, the right of way with being a step of turnaround.
Yeah, fifty to thirty feet or something.
Yeah. So I don't know how to raise my hand, so I'm just going to raise my hand. Okay. Um, when I think about the waivers, for the most part, they're safety concerns that are really the bailiwick of the fire department. Okay, can they get the equipment in there and stuff? I, I'd like to see the input of perhaps a police department on the no sidewalk. I mean, I think that's. It's their germane or that, you know, what they should be looking at rather than us. Okay? So, uh, does that make sense? Okay. I mean, you know, I. The, the fact that the roadway is only eighteen feet versus twenty-two feet, the critical criterion there is, is it safe? For cars to pull in there? Can the fire department get through there? Okay. And that's really the police and the fire department and the engineering department. That we rely upon to answer those questions for us.
I, I think it's also our, our responsibility to look at the, so the, the, the proof plan, which is the cul-de-sac.
Right, right.
Is, is what can be built without waivers. So that's a large infill project. Basically, it's a, it's a large gully that's going to be filled in with a, with a turnaround on top of it. And then two houses jammed in, however that fits. I don't. Um, so then the question becomes if you're waiving the cul-de-sac component and turning into a T junction. Assuming that the fire department says it's safe and assume all of that. Is that a benefit? And I think that's the question we're asking. So is, is seventy, that, I don't, I, I don't even know how much info would be needed there. That's obviously would be part of a different proposal, but it, it seems more in line that. Destroying all of the topography of the existing lot is a worse result than reducing, than, than saying the T. That the fire department had, says is okay, is fine. Again, and we're just basing it off of the assumption that the fire department is going to say it's okay. Or it will be planned in, in a way that, that the fire department is comfortable. But that's, that's sort of a later plan. We're getting over the hump before they submit a plan that does this proof plan instead. So it's sort of, we're, we're, we're deciding which track they go on and determining whether that's appropriate. So I see some hands are up, so I'll just go in the order that.
Thanks, Andrew. That was terrifying.
There, there's, this is, I, I went back and forth of what this means with Elizabeth quite a bit is I, yeah, again, this is the first one we've seen. So, um, Sue, you had your hand up first?
Uh, no, Abby had her hand up first.
Oh, did she? Uh, you're the first one I saw. So Abby, you're up.
So I, I just want to clarify this for myself, and I think also it would be helpful for the public. Um. A subdivision, a, a division of this property is a by right use. If they can demonstrate the proof plan that they can meet without waivers. The, the site plan regulations for subdivision, which they have done. This is a by right use and we have no ability to just outright deny it. It's either it can be built as in the proof plan or it can be built with waivers. Is that correct?
Um, to, to, to a point.
Okay.
So, you know, the engineering division, um, you know, all of their comments. They've, they've raised issues and concerns that additional information, you know, needs to be provided. Um, they, they haven't, they haven't raised, you know, an abs, you know, what I would consider an absolute serious. Flag that, so, you know, no, no way, you know, could. Any type of development happen here. They haven't, they haven't raised that. They have raised issues and concerns where additional information needs to be provided. Um, you know. The, the, the first one from a safety perspective, um, is going to be site distance. Um, you know, they're going to have to provide a site distance analysis, um, for where that roadway comes out. And, um, based on the speed there and, and that could be a significant safety concern. That once all that information does get provided, that can't, can't be solved and can't be addressed. And that's going to be something that the planning board will have to, you know, review and analyze and discuss as part of the definitive subdivision plan. Um.
So that happened in that phase.
But that, that happens, yes, that, that. So this phase is, you know, these issues and concerns being raised where. This is specifically the information that, that town staff is identifying that is going to help them. Valuated definitive plan and provide their comments to the planning board. Um, a, a preliminary plan is an option process for an applicant. They're not required to go through this. Um, I, I would say smart applicants go through this. Because they get to have this conversation beforehand. They get to understand what the issues and concerns are. Can, you know, take the time to pull that information together and have a more complete definitive plan. Um, and a more productive conversation moving forward, um, to, you know, to Mark's point. Um. You know, I, I think that, um, the, you know, the sidewalk. Um, you know, a, a sidewalk for, you know, two homes on, you know, a short street. Um, I, I don't think the police department is going to have, you know, a lot of input on that. Um, but, you know, the board can say, you know, we, you know. Prelimarily, you know. You know, we'll grant the waiver to, you know, not having a sidewalk. Um, contingent upon the police department providing, you know. Additional input for the definitive plan process. So. You know, this, this is really just a, a conversation that gets memorialized in a decision. By the board on what everybody is, understands when the definitive plan gets submitted.
For clarification, for clarification, Elizabeth. They, it's, it's not a, a, a necessarily an either or. If they decided to go with the cul-de-sac, wouldn't they still have to get approval for some assessment of the sight lines? I mean, before they.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so it's, so it's not like, uh, you know, we're, you know, we're getting a, a great deal of oversight. Um, that we wouldn't have had otherwise in terms of some safety issues.
Correct. And, and, uh, you know, an applicant can go through a preliminary process. Um, and then for, for whatever reason, and I'm not saying this applicant is, but it's the, the, the process. Um, and, and then, you know what? For whatever reason, we're just, we're going to just go with the compliant. Design and, and put that forward for, um, you know, the definitive plan. There's, there's no, um, requirement or mandate that an applicant. Go through a preliminary plan process and, and, and that's what they're limited to. Um, because it, it, the preliminary plan doesn't. Because it it the preliminary plan doesn't, doesn't mean anything. It's uh it's not a subdivision. It doesn't grant them any rights to do anything, doesn't create the lots. Uh, it really is just a a conversation and that gets memorialized in a decision. Um, the applicant is not obligated to move forward with the preliminary plan. You know, that's being discussed or uh decided upon by the board.
Sue?
Yeah, um, I thought for one thing, um, I would, well, the board probably remembers, um, although we have some new members and uh the public may not know that there have been a couple of cases in the fairly recent past when the planning board has approved subdivisions that involved a narrower street with a sidewalk only on one side or even with no sidewalk. Um, Walden is a busier road than Lasbrook Road, where one of these subdivisions was recently approved. But um, you know, if police and fire actually say it's safe enough, there is significant, there there is um some precedent for this sort of thing around town and um uh while I'm speaking, let me give my comments. Uh, as Andrew and Abby said, the point here is not um comparing this plan to doing nothing. It's comparing the preliminary plan to the proof plan. And given the far lesser impact on the environment, the reduced impervious surface absorbing heat from the atmosphere and 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 heating up Concord. And given that we have approved some reasonably similar plans in the recent past, I and given that any problem with sightlines, for example, is going to be just as bad for the proof plan as it is for the preliminary plan, I don't see a reason not to um uh back these waivers. Elizabeth, while I'm talking, I have a question for you. Um, at the previous meeting, I floated the idea of possibly improving uh uh reducing the number of curb cuts in Walden by one, by merging uh the street for this subdivision with one or both of the adjacent driveways. Now, I think that has nothing to do with our work tonight, and if the developer chooses to pursue that, they will do so, but it is irrelevant to the issue of the preliminary plan versus proof. Okay, great.
Uh, correct. The planning board's um uh does not have any jurisdiction to uh place any conditions or obligations on the part of uh this property owner uh as it relates to um granting rights to adjacent property owners. Um, I also wanted to point out to um one comment that Sue made. Um, the conversation about the waiver for the sidewalk, uh the planning board's jurisdiction under the subdivision control law, um you you are only looking at um this new roadway that is being proposed as far as the sidewalk. Um, the planning board does not have the ability, again, to um require uh the property owner to um make, you know, let's say substantial off-site improvements. Um, Walden's a busy street. You're doing two homes. Construct a sidewalk on Walden Street. That that is also not within the board's purview.
Um, one, one question, Elizabeth. I I recall um hearing comments about traffic and people ha- um using the road to turn around, um et et cetera, and um cause congestion. Uh, it it seems to me, again, if we are comparing this proposal to the um uh by right proposal, um that there probably would be little difference. Um, and I I wouldn't advocate that that um applicant need to make any studies in that regard or um address that um uh in terms of additional information. I mean, I I do see that there is risk there, but I don't see that there's a reason to to um gather uh any more information at at this point um in terms of a a request, but I just bring that up because it seemed to be a a concern of uh many of the abutters and and those who live in that area.
Um, so um that two thoughts. Um, one, when and again, um, this is process question and not, you know, not justice, this application, but any um definitive subdivision plan. Generally, a definitive subdivision plan of that comes through where certain waivers um are granted, such as this one or um the one that was, you know, eighty X ten fifty-three Main Street with um the, you know, the Y turnaround, the width of the pavement. Um, there, the consistent practice of the planning board for um a number of decades is um that those subdivision definitive subdivision decisions are conditioned that the road shall remain private um and not be accepted as a public way. Um, you know, e- especially um Public Works is not interested in having the town move forward and accept um roads as public ways where there's um subsurface drainage. You know, that's a, that's a maintenance issue, and so it is a consistent practice, um not those roads stay private ways. Um, and the difference between, you know, a private way and a public way is, you know, it is private. They can post a sign that's a private way. No, you know, no turning. Um, and, you know, a public way is a public way. Somebody can turn down a public way. You um, you know, once a, you know, public way goes through, you know, the processes goes through the planning board, public works, that meets all the requirements, goes to town meeting to accept it as a public way. Um, you know, the town, there's different processes that the town would have to go through to, you know, to make something, you know, one way or, you know, that. So, you know, that is something, um, but addressing that concern, no, there there isn't any type of um traffic engineer or traffic study that can can be done to, you know, assess that. And so I agree, there isn't some type of additional information that can be from a factual tra- traffic engineering standpoint to be able to, you know, counter, you know, that that concern. Um, but um, the planning board as part of your preliminary plan can um, you know, state that as part of the definitive plan submission um to have the applicant you know, have conversations with um the police department and Concord Public Works Engineering um to, you know, to I don't know, to discuss this issue and um, you know, try to develop you know, some, you know, proposed solution, and maybe that is just signage and um I, you know, I don't know if that, you know, no turning, private road signage, I don't, I'm not even sure because it is a private road, whether the police department has even the right to enforce that. So that may be a conversation that the applicant can have with the police department and engineering. Um, and and as part of that site distance information, which which is an engineer, you know, evaluation and um looking at the speeds. Um, you know, the their assessment of that may be, you know, at at these, at the speeds in that area, you know, having somebody, you know, to be able to pull in, you know, and turn around and, you know, that that may not be that may not really be a viable option. So I think um, there's, you know, again, the issue has been raised and the board can ask the applicant to look into that issue further and try to provide some, you know, factual information to, you know, to offset that issue or, um, you know, it it's not an issue and then have the conversations with Public Works Engineering and the police department and get their input and feedback for the definitive plan.
Thank you.
You're muted, Andrew.
Sorry, Pat. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm I'm still trying to wrap my brain around all this. So, um at this point, because it's a preliminary plan, the planning board, you would use the word grant a waiver, or you'd use the expression grant a waiver. That's not what we would be even contemplating at this point. We'd be giving the applicant feedback or an indication of how we felt about any given waiver or where we thought there were problems or opportunities with a waiver. But would it then come back to us as a planning board for a site plan review with a definitive plan? And at that point, would we be granting or not granting waivers?
Um, so um, this terminology, um site plan is something for actual um development of a site, a building, construction, parking, layouts. Um, and and that's something that happens under zoning. Um, a definitive plan is purely under the state's subdivision control law and the planning board's subdivision rules and regs. Um, and it it only deals with the layout of a right of way, which is um, you know, fifty feet. That's the area in which the pavement has to be in, um utilities have to be in, stormwater drainage for that pavement has to be in. And it it does not include the actual development of the individual house slots and the buildings for those house slots. So that's, you know, process-wise, um, that's what that is. Um, the conversation tonight on the waivers is whether um the board supports that waiver as the applicant moves forward in developing a definitive plan. The definitive plan process, the board um is required to individually go through each one of the waivers and make a finding to either grant or deny that waiver. Um, and that's, that is specific um process that the planning board will go through for the definitive plan. But tonight, it would be, you know, if the if the board is in support of granting the waiver for no sidewalk, then this is an a indication to the applicant, they can move forward, develop their definitive plan set, which is gonna have detailed grading, detailed stormwater drainage, detailed um utilities, pavement, curving. And, you know, another, you know, another waiver, they're probably going that they didn't ask now, and and we're not gonna change this, but for the definitive plan, you know, whether you know, you know, streetlights. Um, I I can't imagine having a streetlight for only two homes, but so, but right now, it's just giving that the applicant the indication on what the planning board would support. Um, so as the applicant moves forward with developing a definitive plan, they they don't have to try and develop a plan that includes a sidewalk if, you know, the the planning board is generally agrees that a sidewalk for two homes is not necessary. Does that answer your question?
It does.
And and it's my understanding that by granting these waivers, we lessen the impact on the overall piece of property by not making them do the turnaround, make the driveway, make the roadway twenty-two feet versus eighteen feet. Is that correct?
That that's part of the evaluation process that the board goes through when they look at a preliminary plan and the waivers that are requesting, um that are being requested. As, you know, before the applicant goes forward with a definitive plan. So that that that's not just, you know, this application. That would be for any preliminary plan application and waivers.
But for this particular plan, Robert, you want to do this this way because it reduces the impact on the parcel? Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. I think the most significant thing would be not, you know, adding this this, you know, very significant amount of fill within that ravine there. Um, that to me is what the what we're trying to accomplish here.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you. All good.
Elizabeth, can, is it possible to bring up the list of waivers? I can't seem to access them. And and in my mind, we're we're looking at sort of the cost and benefit of these waivers. And I don't mean cost in terms of money, but we're we're, and I think Sue, you said this before, we're kind of being asked to say, yes, this is a waiver. It would be a benefit to the community to give this waiver. Or it would be not a benefit, or it would, there'd be a higher.
I I think it's not even that 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 we we need to determine now whether there's a benefit or not, but it's whether the board is supportive of that type of trade-off.
Right, okay.
You know, the trade-off of having the it the turnaround reduce, the the T turnaround reduced to thirty feet to allow more area for the sewer sewage system to be put on the flatland is a benefit because there will be less site disruption. And ultimately, I think that'll come down to what the final plan says the amount of site disruption is. Because if we say yes, we're generally supportive of all this, and they come back with a plan that has two twelve thousand square foot houses because they flattened the whole thing anyway, we're gonna look at that and say that's crazy. No. Even though we were supportive of it in the idea, you know what I mean? That's the way I'm looking at it. Um, so what they've shown on the plan is where houses are roughly positioned and saying, okay, for this, where the house is and where the sewer sys- sewage system is, I would be supportive of that based on what we've seen. And if if something fundamentally changes between now and then, then that's gonna have a be a completely different discussion, but I think that's how we're asked to look at it. I think it makes sense to go through each one and see if anyone has any comments. I I'm generally supportive of the first one, a sense of reducing the right of way so that their ability to maximize development on the existing flatland and reducing the amount of fill i- is a positive. Um, given the fact that it's a pretty substantial ravine and and filling the whole thing in so that they can make a fifty-foot right of way for a single car driveway doesn't make a lot of sense to me, you know, the the way I'm I'm seeing the plan. And that that's just the way I'm looking at it. I don't know if anyone has any comments or thoughts another way. Then we can just move on through these and try to get some preliminary. So does anyone else have any thoughts on the first wave there?
Would it be helpful to look at the proof plan and and then the preliminary plan, just to kind of um uh have the applicant sort of arrow out, you know, what each of the four options is is gaining them? Or is that too much to go through?
No, no, no. It's helpful to you. We should do it. So Elizabeth, do you want to pull up the? I think the proof plan is just that cul-de-sac, so it's actually, I think, the preliminary, what would be the operative.
Uh, would it be better if I shared my screen? That way I can sort of use my mouse dictated.
Definitely would be better.
All right, I'll uh, I'll go ahead and share those for you guys.
Yeah, and then you can go just go through one, two, three, four and show us.
Sure.
What what the gain.
Yeah, of course, the proof plan doesn't show um the driveways to the houses, nor the houses themselves. I was just looking at them um side by side. And uh it's less obvious about the pavement reduction, but then I remembered, oh, right, there are no driveways. So there is actually a lot of pavement reduction with the preliminary plan.
Right, right. Um, yeah, so just starting with the first one here, right of way with redu- being reduced from fifty to thirty feet. So if we actually take a look here, our right of way is contained in this boundary. You follow my mouse here? And it does contain a large portion of this this driveway here. Um, so the right of way uh is actually fifty foot in width throughout most of this uh Um, so the right-of-way is actually fifty foot in width throughout most of this area here. It actually, we're only reducing it for the turn, turnaround portion here. Um, and this is acceptable because, you know, the, the purpose of having such a wide right-of-way is to allow the town to maintain these roads. Um, and, you know, if they have to extend the shoulder or, or, you know, go beyond the limits of the roadway, this allows them to do so. Uh, we don't think a fifty-foot width would be so necessary here, where it's just the turnaround being included here. Um, and also, this allows us to get much more area on this flatter portion of the land to construct the septic systems, as well as, you know, generally anything on the lot, you know, we have more room for the houses, the driveways, so. That is what we're trying to accomplish here. And I'll just, I'll stop after each one, we can discuss.
But, but you said you're having it be fifty feet. I, I think I got a little confused there, so the town can maintain it, but.
No. So, um, and I'll, I'll correct that one. In the, in the subdivision rules and regs, the right-of-way width requirement is fifty feet. And when somebody proposes a new subdivision roadway that meets all of the requirements of the subdivision rules and regulations, that is generally based on the idea that that road, once it's completed, um, the applicant will make a request that it be accepted as a public road. So the fifty-foot width for a public road is to allow you, um, you have your pavement width, and you have um, much wider area on each side for a shoulder for underground utilities, for CMLP, um, whether, you know, gas service, or, um, you know, all the other underground utilities that the town may put in a public road and have to maintain. For this proposal that's in front of you because the applicant is requesting these waivers going from a right-of-way width of fifty feet down to thirty feet. Um, you know, again, it would be consistent with decades of practice that this road would remain private and would not be accepted as a public road. Does that answer your question, Linda?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure, then would that change this preliminary plan?
No, that's what's being shown on this.
That's being shown, okay, then, then I just misunderstood what, what was being said. Okay, thank you.
A fifty-foot right-of-way is generally, for a public right-of-way, would be to, you know, allow the town to come back through and put in, you know, underground utilities.
Dan, now, I thought he was pointing and saying this is going to be a public road, but it will not be.
No.
Okay, fine.
I think, I think he referenced public road, just saying that the, the rules are with the consideration in mind that, that it will be accepted, so it's the minimum that the town would require. And that's why we're now discussing something smaller, because it's not going to be a public right-of-way.
Right. Right, and I think instead of saying the town to maintain, I, I mean general maintenance of the roadway and, and its shoulders and, and whatnot, so.
Okay.
So, thanks. Thanks. Um, I guess next, are there any other questions related to this specific waiver and whether people are generally supportive or not? I will say that I am generally supportive of it, given the fact that it, it's accomplishing its goal of creating more space on the flat part of the parcel to accommodate the houses as well as the septic systems without resorting to more infill. Um, ultimately, that will determine the next step of the plan. Well, we'll see if that actually comes to fruition, but, but right now, that's where I'm sitting, so.
I, I agree, I agree with you, Andrew.
Me too. Me too.
Okay, that seems to be at least a general consensus, so we can move on to the second one.
All right, so for the second one, uh, we're looking at a reduction of the pavement width from the required twenty-two feet to eighteen feet in width. So, again, we're, we're, we're trying to do this to reduce the overall impervious area on site. Uh, and I also wanted to comment that although the pavement width is only eighteen feet, we are still providing a twenty-two-foot functional width. So we'll have two feet, two foot shoulders on either side of this roadway. Um, if, if access is, does become limited with the eighteen feet, um, there will be two-foot shoulders, uh, that are, you know, more structurally sound and can handle uh, vehicle loading on it. So it would sort of serve the same purpose, but does reduce the impervious footprint here.
It looks like it's nip and tuck at that corner by the turnaround with the next lot over, but I assume that you have measured and there's room for two feet there.
Right, right, and, um, that may need a slight adjustment, but it's, you know, we're, we're confident we can make that work there. And similarly, I know the wall is sort of within that right now, but, um, um, like I've said, we, we can eliminate those retaining walls at the front there.
Pat, you have a question?
Yeah, I do. So when we, we talk about reducing impervious surface and we talk about reducing the benefit of reducing the amount of infill on the ravine, do we, do we as a board have a general consensus and understanding that those would be benefits to the community? And we're talking as if we, we do believe that they would be benefits? And perhaps this is just general knowledge and that's all we're relying on, or?
I think, Robert, if you show the actual proof plan, not the preliminary plan, and go over that, that might be helpful.
Well.
I, I thought Pat's question was more general, and I will point out that it's in keeping with the town's for sustainability principles, if nothing else.
Okay, so, I guess what, and preface this is just because I'm ignorant about it, there is a general understanding that less infill, less impervious surface is a benefit to any community anywhere.
Yeah, I think so. And, and, and then the question becomes whether the, the changes that, that are wrought from the requested waivers are sufficient, of sufficient magnitude to bring them to a level in your own understanding of being a public benefit.
Okay.
Said, I, you know, I want a wave height requirement so that I can make the, the house, you know, have one less square foot of driveway space. Obviously, everyone's going to say, you know what I mean, it, it becomes a a common sense balancing act, and that's the way I've been looking at it.
That's helpful, thank you.
So I don't know that we have to go over the proof right now, I think it's just, uh.
No, it really was more of a general question.
Okay. So with that, I guess the next question we have is whether people are generally supportive of reducing the pavement width from the standard twenty-two feet to the proposed eighteen feet. Where it would result in a corresponding reduction in the amount of impervious surface, um, where there is still clearances on both sides that are, are meeting that, otherwise meeting that requirement. Um, I would say that, to me, that would make sense in the sense that you're just basically paving ground that no one's going to drive on, doesn't serve any purpose. But I will see if anyone else has any thoughts.
I, I think as long as, I said before, as long as fire department, engineering and the police department sign off on it and said that it is safe for, you know, what is required there, then I don't have a problem with it, I guess.
Yeah, less asphalt is more, as long as public safety is okay with it.
Agreed.
I think that, unless anybody has any, um, thoughts, the contracting that covers, uh, general consensus. Generally support.
Okay, with that, I'll, uh, move on to our third waiver request. Um, so this one is, uh, a waiver request of the cul-de-sac requirements. So that would be, you know, having our, our subdivision road and then a bulb like this, uh, and a circular turnaround. Instead, we're proposing our T turnaround. So again, this, this is another tactic to reduce the amount of, uh, impervious area on the site, but I think most impactfully, you can see with this requirement of the bulb at the end here, uh, it creates this, this large road surface area that, uh, must be placed in, in, within this ravine here because there really is no other place for it to go. Um, so this is what would require the, the mass, I shouldn't say that, the import of more fill material, um, to build this road. Uh, where for building this T turnaround here, it would be much less of an impact.
Well, I have a question about that, that occurs to me now. So, um, we saw in the application that there are no endangered species known to be on the property. Uh, it's nevertheless a habitat for creatures, but that's in its current state. I don't think that you're required to say as part of this applicant, but I, application, but I wonder if the applicant is planning on, like, clearing the ravine and, um, turning it into lawn without filling it. Except that even if you said, no, no, we wouldn't do that, that's not part of the application, so, um, so we wouldn't know anyway. I guess my question was very confused, but, so I'm trying to say that I'm very much in favor of preserving the land less disturbed and leaving some habitat there for whatever is currently living there. But if it's going to get clear-cut anyway, then that reduces the benefit significantly.
I, I see what you're saying, yes. Um, I'd still, I would still argue that it's, it's a benefit to go with the T turnaround. Simply for the lack of impervious surface added into that area. Um, you know, e- every bit of impervious surface is going to contribute to, uh, more runoff, um, flowing downstream. Uh, it's going to prevent the infiltration of water into the ground. Um, so I think in general, it's going to be a benefit, um, no matter how it's looked at in the end. You know, just generally having much less impervious surface, I think is going to be a, a huge impact.
Well, I agree with that as well, but since we're at the moment discussing this particular waiver, I thought I would float that question. It sounds like the answer is, uh, you're not saying it this time.
I, I am also not very sure at this time what it's going to look out, look, look like. We, we really need to flesh out the design and, and see where things are closer to the end, so, I, and totally, I can't, I can't answer that question at this time.
Elizabeth?
It seemed to me, Sue, that we can't require, but we certainly can, um, support the option, which is, well, you know, what we have the opportunity tonight to do.
Right, yes, I mean, and I am assuming that there is going to be at least some clearing behind the houses to give some, um, uh, clearance around the houses for not having trees fall on them or whatever other purpose. It's too much of a slope for, uh, playing croquet on, but, uh, maybe one could do something else.
Well, it looks like they have further discussions with engineering, so.
Yes. Uh, yeah, so I'm hoping that as much as possible, the ravine would remain, um, un, uncleared, but there are at least the value for, uh, the other reduced pavement and other parts, even if we don't get all that much value out of not filling up the ravine.
Elizabeth, you had a?
So, I, I, again, this comes down to more of a process and jurisdictional, um, discussion. Uh, the construction of the dwellings and whatever rating associated with the construction of the homes um, is not part of the subdivision um, decision or the conversation for the planning board. The, the planning board is specifically at this point in time, you know, discussing the, the subdivision roadway, the utilities, uh, and the stormwater drainage for that roadway. Um, it does not extend to the construction of the individual homes. Um, that is a process under zoning, um, and other bylaws, uh, that the community has adopted. So for, um, the, the subdivision and the onsite sewage disposal, you know, the comments made about granting these waivers so that the sewage disposal systems can be up in the front yard, on the flat parts, um, and, you know, not down in the ravine. For the individual homes, um, underzoning, there's the earth removal and fill bylaw where, um, the construction of the dwelling and the, you know, foundation, um, you know, up to a thousand cubic yards, you know, that's exempt. If a property owner wanted to come in and, you know, clear-cut everything behind the house and fill that in, that, that's a different special permit process through the Board of Appeals for an earth removal and filling special permit. Um, and, and that would be addressed in there. Additionally, one of the, um, items I would probably suggest for this process is so that the board can have an understanding is, um, as part of the definitive plan, there'll be a, a grading plan solely for the roadway, the stormwater drainage and those utilities. Whatever tree removal is required for that, that, that is exempt from the tree protection bylaw. The grading associated with the dwellings, um, that, that is, that is required, um, you know, is not exempt from the tree protection bylaw, but more than likely, you know, given the tight site, you know, the applicant's going to prepare a definitive plan that, that shows both. Is, you, you know, you really, you really can't develop this roadway without having an understanding of how the homes are going to to fit in those locations, you know, with those septic systems, but, so, um, you know, it, it is kind of challenging to think of just the subdivision and the tree removal and grading that's required for just that roadway compared to just what is being shown on the preliminary plan for the roadway and the drainage. Um, and whether that is in, you know, as far as the, the benefit.
Right, I do see that point. Um, I didn't mean, uh, the, any if we, um, rejected the preliminary plan and, um, uh, went with the by right, and it, with the result that the by right plan was followed, there would be a lot, whole lot of earth filling and clear-cutting, and so I was trying to compare the benefit of that clear-cutting, which we know would happen under the by right plan, um, and earth filling with the tree cutting we don't really quite know about with the preliminary plan. And i- it seems like that's an unknown. I'm willing to say I'm okay with this waiver on grounds that even though I don't know if it would be a benefit to the public, there's the other waivers, which I do believe would be of a benefit to the public. But I was trying to go over, trying to get set in my head whether I really could see a benefit to this particular waiver or not, and I think it's less clear because we don't know what would happen with the preliminary plan.
So I'm not sure I understand how it's less clear on the tree removal between the proof plan and the preliminary plan.
Because with the proof plan, we're sure there would be lots of tree removal because that's you would have to clear every tree where the cul-de-sac would be, but on the preliminary plan, we don't know how much of it would be cleared. Maybe I just didn't understand what you said about.
Well, you, 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 you would know how much would be needed to be. Well, you, 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 you would know how much would be needed to be cleared. For the, the roadway and the utilities, it's, it's just that small front portion. Right, but we don't know whether they would additionally choose to clear the back part of the lot. Where the ravine is, because that is not part of the preliminary plan, so that's an unknown and it will remain. That's not part of subdivision, you that, that won't be even part of the conversation. And, and uh, and part of the board's um. Decision whether to approve the definitive subdivision plan or not, not be based on how they're going to develop each individual lot.
So, so, but we can, we can look at it and say, this will use less film. That is a clear.
That's correct.
That is a clearly from between the proof plan and this. Is, is within common sense to determine that if you're pitting, you're paving a flat lot. It is going to use a lot less, it might use some, we don't know, but a lot less than building a cul-de-sac over a ravine. And it's a positive to not do. Regardless of whether they add, they remove trees or whatever, there is a benefit to not. Filling a ravine and paving it um and that, that's the, you know, and ultimately whether. We make a determination that the plan that they came up with is better. Is something that we can determine when we have the final plan, but right now on the preliminary level, we can say that this is. Something we'd be supportive of, I think that's all we have to do right now, is this. Yeah, as a group, say, we're generally supportive of the idea of having substantially less film. And then we can have the, the discussion of whether it outweighs it or not and is in the public benefit when we actually see the final plan, which will. You know, because it, it may change. And, and that's something that they obviously have the right to do and will look at it when it's actually final as opposed to just very solid rough drift. So I guess the, the question then becomes, are people generally supportive of the idea that the small right of way. As presented is, we could be supportive of that as opposed to be um. Yeah, yeah, generally supportive of this, I guess is the question, is, is there anyone who is not? No, we discussed this role.
No, I mean, I, I don't love it, but it's better than having that big turnaround, sorry.
Okay. And then. The last item, I'm, I'm trying to pick it up on someone else's screens, that's not the work. Um is, is sidewalks and whether we generally are supportive of the idea of two lot subdivision, whether sidewalks are necessary. For pedestrian safety um. Eh I, I can say that. I, I'm generally opposed to paving things that no one will use um. So where there is less vehicular traffic, the idea of extending the pavement wider. Doesn't to me make a lot of sense and it's something that, that we have, we as a board have waived in the past for. Low traffic developments and I don't see a reason not to entertain that waiver depending on the. Final solution that comes out of this planning process, and if anyone else has different feeling, please let me know. Awesome, so I, I think the general consensus is, is that we are, are. Amenable to the waivers as suggested and we will look forward to the ultimate plan, but I don't know the magic words I need. Okay, so I, I think generally the answer we have right now is that we are, we are um. I, I guess, can we, I, uh speaking on behalf of the, to the applicant. Um can we ask if they would be willing to grant a time exemption to August thirtieth so the board can continue the application with their twenty, August twenty seventh? Our next meeting to review the final written decision based on the discussion we had tonight. Is that acceptable?
Yes, that would be acceptable.
Okay, so do we need anything more from them, Elizabeth, related to that or something?
Yeah, so if the um, the board tonight can um just ac- accept the applicant's. Um acknowledgement for a time extension uh to August thirtieth, I will send. Uh Robert the form tomorrow so that we can file with the town clerk, but the board can at least, you know, acknowledge and accept that. Uh grant of a time extension tonight and then continue this to your August twenty seventh. August twenty seventh meeting.
Okay, so do we have a motion to do that? Is that all we need?
And um I, yeah, and I, I'll prepare a, um a draft um decision based on the conversation. Um based on the input from the other town departments and their comments and issues and concerns. Um for the board to review at that meeting.
So I make a motion that we request the applicant, give us a good, an extension until August thirtieth.
But you um, that you uh accept the applicant's grant of a time extension, sorry.
That we accept the applicant's grant of a time extension to August thirtieth and we postpone this.
Continue.
Continue, thank you, this project until the meeting of August twenty seventh. At seven forty P M.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Awesome, and then I'll do a roll call vote and the order people appear, Linda Miller.
Yes.
Mark Giddings.
Yes.
Kevin Flanagan.
Yes.
Rob Almeida.
Yes.
Luke Felsham.
I.
Pat Nelson.
Yes.
And I, Andrew Boardman, and yes, that is unanimous, so um excellent. So that is that for tonight and we will.
Sorry, sorry, Andrew, did we need to take public comment on that? Or no, because it's just a.
That's a good question. Um I guess we, we should probably open it up to public comment, that is an excellent point, we, we can still, we can still accept and continue that. Just to the discussion, but we will, we will obviously open it up to public comment now, thank you, Abby. Is there anyone who is on the board who would, or anyone who is in the meeting who would like to raise their hand and be recognized? I see that Sharon Carroll, if you could just state your name and your address for the record, then we can um. Oh, hand it down, I'm still there.
Yeah, I'm still here. Uh yeah, Sharon Carroll, I live at six hundred Walden Street um. As we've been following the progress of this project, I guess I just wanted to reiterate what I. Uh read on the planning board's website in terms of the charge and the things that. Um are within your purview when it comes to subdivisions. Um the first thing that I noticed was that it's about ensuring the safety, convenience and welfare of present and future inhabitants of Concord. It's also regulating the areas uh within the project to be safe and convenient for travel. As well as taking action towards lessening congestion in adjacent public ways. As well as preserving the special historical and rural character of Concord. As an abatter to this lot, it certainly is in my interest not to clear cut. And fill and we would love to maintain the natural beauty of the area, however. The lot eh eh is very tricky, the topography, the shape. Um the natural aspects of this lot, I think is challenging. And to me, it seems as though having subdivision rules are there for a reason. And that shortcutting those rules and regulations in order to reduce the cost of. A plan, which let's just call it what it is, it's going to be less expensive to do a T turnaround than a cul-de-sac. It's going to be less expensive to do a um. Less wide road, it's going to be less expensive to um, you know, put side, not put sidewalks in. I, I think we should be considering all of these things, I do not have a traffic study, I do not have scientific proof. Of um the traffic issues that we face on Walden Street, but I have lived here with my husband. For, you know, twenty-six years, I grew up in this house, so I have twenty-five plus years. Um living in this neighborhood and we know what the traffic issues are. Um all you need to do is drive through here late in the spring, during the summer, all through fall. And look at the parking at Walden, uh parking at Fairyland, the parking at um the high school. The parking on Brewster's Hill Road, the parking at the handicapped parking lot that's right across from this lot. And you'll see that no amount of signage really changes that, we have a significant number of. People coming off of Route Two who want to turn around and go the opposite direction that use any and all. Roadways, driveways, et cetera, and I think that by creating a road here, it doesn't matter whether it says private way or not. It's going to be utilized by more than just those two houses on that road. And I think having a T turnaround is gonna be problematic, particularly in the very busy times. Because you're not gonna just get one at a time, you're gonna get people who are like, oh, I'm gonna wait here until Walden Pond opens. Oh, I need to turn around so I can now get in the queue to get to Walden Pond. And having a T turnaround is gonna be hard to navigate when there's more than one car on that roadway. Um so I just wanted to kind of reiterate these points because I feel like we kind of got. Into the sustainability and the clear cutting and can we save trees and, and yes, it, it is less. Impact to the lot, but I think we need to consider the whole project and. Where it is in Concord and what the reality is of, of this space.
Thank you for your comment, um does anyone else have any um public comment? And if not, we will move on to the next item of the agenda, which I have to close this screen. Sorry, I usually use two screens, but one of them dies, and now I'm just flipping back and forth. With the MBTA um discussion related to um. The EO H L C's feedback, Elizabeth, wow, um is that item?
Okay, um so everybody got a copy of um the letter from the state. Uh what I can um, what might be the. Easiest thing to do is I can share my screen and we can go through each of the points. And I can tell you where I am currently in um discussion. Cause of course um it is not cutting dry um and uh. So item one um between the. Maybe for Pat's benefit, when I talk about the compliance model, um that is the. The BACA House Geographic Information System, excuse me. Um parcel data, um the GIS maps and plugging in. All of the values um from the, the zoning bylaw, the words. Um this is your minimum lot size, this is your parking requirement, this, these are your setbacks, this is your height limit. It takes all of those dimensional requirements and plugs it into this compliance model for GIS. It takes out um, takes those areas out of your available land area, it takes floodplain areas out, it takes. Um and, and it basically, if you, if you think of the town where square and you started. Deleting all these different little areas, you come up with, okay, so by the state's standards. Under their guidelines, this is the area that would be available to be developed under the MBTA communities zoning. So that's what I mean when I talk about the compliance model. Um so item one, um there was a um a discrepancy between the words in the zoning bylaw and one of the. Setback dimensional requirements in the compliance model for one of the sub-districts. Um so um I did meet with um our towns GIS team. And Tristan and Tristan also went back and had a couple of meetings with the consultants from Horsey and Witten. Who did the um first compliance model with the board and pulled everything together. So they went through, they corrected that one, so we've taken care of um number one. Um number two is um. Wow, we're, we're, we're not quite sure what this states, I, I know what the state is. What the state's talking about in number two um but. Our consultant from Horsey and Witten and our own town G I, um GIS team went back to the state's guidelines. Um and the information material that the state put out and verified that they. Did do the compliance model as it relates to road right of ways. Um and they, 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 they did do it correctly, so um we're just gonna have to, when we reply back to the state. Provide the information that um they have pulled together, the document that we did it correctly. Um item three, I'm gonna skip item three because that is um, that is what I, is the big issue. And I'll explain that one in a minute, uh item four, um our GIS team went back and. Um reevaluated the floodplain conservancy district layer and um the compliance model. Uh and did make some tweaks and changes, it didn't drastically change anything, but um. Um they, they corrected a few things and so four is um is being corrected. Five is um an advisory notice, I'm gonna say, um. It's, it's a notice that every community gets when they do any zoning bylaw amendment that deals with. Site plan review, um you get an advisory notice from the Attorney General saying, you know. You know, this isn't a special permit process, you can't treat it like a special permit process and, you know, make sure your standards are objective and. You know, non-discretionary and so um. As the board moves forward in the finalizing your MBTA communities zoning site plan rules and regulations. Um that uh guidance, um that will be something that uh town council will. Um assist the board in making sure that's, um you know, there aren't any red flags uh being raised uh that would cause. The Executive Office of Housing and Livable, Livable, Livable Communities, which I'm gonna, from now, I'm just gonna call it H L C. Would turn around and have a problem with, so um we understand five, um item six. Um they are um and I've had the conversation with town council, um they are. Completely misinterpreting the zoning bylaw and how that particular section. Six point two point two minimum lot area uh as it relates to MBTA communities. Um this, that section only deals with the creation of new lots since nineteen ninety-one. Um so any new lot that's been created since nineteen ninety-one, uh you have to have fifty percent of the area has to be upland. Um that, that's a dimensional standard for the creation of new lots, uh and that has nothing to do with MBTA communities. Or a, a, a dimensional requirement that's um. Would impact the MBTA communities zoning, um any, any lot that's currently within those zone districts. Um they're, they're legal lots. Their legal lots, you know, created before nineteen ninety one, because any lot created after that has to meet this requirement. So, um, that's just gonna be a statement that uh will develop as part of the response. Um, and. Uh, I don't, I don't have an issue with that. Um, and again, talking with town council about item seven. The earth removal and fill by law, um, does not. Supersede any by right use. Uh, it it doesn't supersede, you know, a by right, single family dwelling. Um, it is a requirement should somebody choose to to build something that requires. Um, more than a thousand cubic yards of fill, they need a special permit. Um, they can choose to develop a by right. Excuse me, by right project and not trigger, you know, the earth removal and fill by law section. So again, town council believes that um it just needs um. The purpose of that section and what is by right, it does does not change because of this special permit requirement. Um, and eight is uh. Yeah, so I I guess some communities have adopted the bylaw language and didn't adopt a map. Uh, but that's not the case for the town of Concord. So, any questions on those before I go back to three? No, okay. So, three, the submitted district does not meet the. Contiguity requirement of the guidelines under section five A. In the guideline, section five A for the town of Concord, we're required to have a minimum of fifty acres. And fifty percent of that has to be within the half, uh, I mean, in the station area, the. Now, Linda is the the one mile radius. Thank you. HLC has taken that guideline requirement. And interpreted it to be um, whatever. Acreage a community puts forth. Fifty percent of that acreage has to be contiguous in within the station area. So, um, we were going on the um, I guess the assumption. Um, that we, a compliant district would have to be at least fifty acres and have one. Of the districts be at least twenty five eight contiguous acres within the station area. Um, they have come back and said, no, you pu- put forth. Um, a district that's eighty four acres. Actually eighty four point four two acres. You need to have a contiguous district within the station area. Um, that's forty two point two one acres. So. Whatever you put forth, they're saying that you have to have. Fifty percent of that has to be contiguous within your station area. So, um, we may only have to have a minimum of fifty acres and twenty five acres contiguous. Um, but they have interpreted to be, we put forth eighty four point four two acres. So our contiguous requirement in the station area is um actually forty two point two one. So. How how we go about fixing that? Um, there's lots of options. And and talking with. Our GIS consultants. Um, and I'm gonna bring up different screens. Um, Tristan ran different scenarios. And. The issue with how they are interpreting interpreting it. Um, you you can't just add area. To to a district. To to make it larger and make it contiguous, because you continually add to your total area. So. So, right now, we're eighty four point four two, and we need forty two point two one. Our current district, um, largest district is only thirty thousand, I mean thirty. Thirty 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 something acres and I, sorry, I don't know off the top of my head what that is. So if you were to just. Let's say it's thirty, you know, thirty two acres. If you were to just add ten acres or eleven acres to get it to. The forty three acres, well, now you've just upped it from eighty four to ninety four. So now, half a ninety four, yeah, so the 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 only way you can you can. Get in compliance. Is is really is to to shorten it, to reduce the acreage outside of the station area. Increase the acreage within the station area until you get to this line of. The right amount of area, the right amount of contiguous area. And go through the compliance model to make sure that we hit the target of one thousand one hundred and ninety four units. Any questions so far? It's a lot, um, but I I I think everybody kind of understands, so.
Um, well, I do have a question, which is where did the within the station area part come from? Because I remember them saying about half of the area had to be contiguous, but I don't remember them saying. It had to be continuous contiguous within the. Station area, but that's what they're saying now is your point.
So. So if there, if our our largest area contiguous area. Is um, is the the area, the Baker Ave area. Um, all the other areas. That that's the only area that that we can make figure to meet the contiguous area within that station area. With is within that station area. I I would definitely have to double check. The guidelines on on the contiguous requirement, whether it's in or out of the station area. I don't. Linda's moved on to MCI Concord, so, um, so I'd have to check specifically on that one, Sue.
So, do we act, do we ask them for, you know, uh, an exception? Do they grant exceptions?
Not, no, not that I'm aware of, no.
So basically, you have to redo the whole thing.
Um, no, so so what um Tristan did is, um, so first off, so. Our original, um. Our our requirements are, um, we have to have a unit count of one thousand and ninety four.
Right.
And contiguous acreage inside the station area fifty percent. So. Uh, and 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 we met that. Um. With our with our, I'm gonna say our our pre-adoption compliance model, they they looked at. So, the first thing Tristan did was fix the floodplain conservancy, you know, unit count. Um, and with that fix, um, we went down to one thousand and eleven units. And our contiguous acreage inside the station area was thirty seven point six percent. So that would be the the Baker Ave area. Then started um, looking at other options. First option would be um. Was to remove sub district two, which is Concord Lumber, Concord Oil and those three homes. Um, most of those of those five parcels um were excluded because. Um, almost all of it is within the floodplain already. Um, so. Removing that reduced the the unit count down to nine hundred and sixty one. But now our contiguous acreage um went up to forty point four percent. Um, and then it, he just started, you know, kind of looking at the the number game, the the numbers game. With the Baker Ave sub district, adding one parcel at a time. Until he got to the point where. We got to. Um, and I'll show you the map. Got to. A count of one thousand two hundred and forty four units. And a contiguous acreage of fifty two percent. And the way he did that. Was. So this is the Baker Ave. Um. Sub district. Uh, this is Route Two, Baker Ave Extension, Baker Ave, Main Street. Commonwealth Ave, commuter rail station. The current district that was adopted by town meeting includes Junction Village. Concord Park Existed Living and this area of land, which is the Novo. Uh, Riverside Commons Comprehensive Permit. Um, Tristan started with adding one parcel at a time. And then ending with adding Brookside Square. Um, and so you, so I just got this this afternoon.
The post office.
Be able to add the post office. So, um, again, you know. It 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 comes down to that little numbers numbers game, but. So this right here, you know, taking out the post office may. Um. May make it fifty percent and, you know, so we may be able to take the post office out and not not go below. One thousand and ninety four and fifty percent. Um, but. This is one solution.
Does that mean?
So I just wanted to present, I I do not expect the planning board to have any conversation about that. I just wanted um you to understand, this is kind of the. The scenario work that's gonna have to be done to try and figure this out. So, um, I would imagine that, you know, like each board member. You you can sit on the town's, you know, web GIS, all the MBTA stuff is still there and, you know, look at. All five of the sub districts. Um, kind of, you know, kind of understand the, you know, the magnitude of, you know, what, you know, what. Board's trying to accomplish. And and it may be. The the first conversation, you know, the planning board had, you know, you you looked at. A lot of different areas based on the public comments. Um, and it and it may be. Um. You know, going back and looking at all the potential sites again. And running based, running through a scenario based example of, okay. What if we add? Um, I don't know if, I don't know if we can add twenty two twenty nine Main Street at at this point. Cause um, it it is. I I I don't know about the ownership's piece of it, but, you know, maybe it's, you know, adding. Olive Forest Ridge. I I don't, I don't know, but, um, so this is kind of the the process.
Those wouldn't increase the area within the. Um, half mile of this train station.
Right, to Sue's point, I will, um, I will follow up on. Um.
Whether it had to be in the station area or just contiguous somewhere.
Yeah, I I I'll follow up on that one, but I do tend to think that it's. Um.
Does this necessitate going back through town meeting?
Yes.
And this is very difficult because, I mean, if we were to add the properties as shown here. This is, I mean, already we were taking away from our commercial tax base potentially by um. Uh, taking parts of Baker Ave and allowing them to turn from commercial to residential. And this would be supercharging that. Um, and another alternative is if we allowed uh. The unit count to be a little denser by reducing setbacks or something, then we could get our unit count. Without having to put so many acres into the district, but that just. The cans of worms of, people said they didn't want it to be more dense.
But it's not the unit count, that's the problem. It's the acreage. And then it becomes a unit count.
Right, except that if the unit count was higher, then we could reduce districts elsewhere. But then that, I mean, well, I guess we are completely stuck on the problem of um. People wanted parity between West Concord and Concord Center, but if the state says that fifty percent of the area has to be contiguous. Then. It becomes. Impossible to get that parity unless we remove the entirety of Elm Street. Increase the area in downtown Concord and wow.
I think I think the ultimate is there's a lot to discuss, but but um, there's a lot of GIS work that needs to happen first and discussions. With subject matter experts of how how this can be. Figured out and and more clarity from council as well as.
So.
Elizabeth has, I'm sorry, um, have other, do you know if other towns have run into this problem? When they, they have. So so this is like, other towns had our interpretation. And, yeah, so that's frustrating that it was like this was kind of.
Um.
Clear to the towns in one way and the HLC had a different. Should be in the group chat, in the town planner group chat.
You should see town councils, um, you know, co- comment about this interpretation.
So we're, so we're not the only ones in this position. Is there, is there some sense of? Um, and maybe it's early in the process, how are other towns just doing this GIS? Kind of map experiment of shifting things around and seeing.
Yeah.
Is that kind of, yeah, that's kind of the solution left to us. Okay.
From a, from a timing um perspective, you know, we're 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 working off. You know, a pre-adoption comment letter. Um, and. Um. From a strategy standpoint, you know, I wanna talk to town council, you know, a little bit more. But from a strategy standpoint, um, going through, um, addressing. All of the other comments other than this particular, you know, comment number three. Um. And then, you know, actually before December thirty first, um, submit for compliance. And. By December thirty first, you know, I I'm not, I'm not sure how item three. Be- because if if every single community. That's trying to adopt MBTA communities is basically being penalized by doing more than the minimum. You know, I'm not sure how that conversation's going to, you know, resolve itself in the next, you know, five months. It it's. You know, it it's less of an issue for cities because they have so many stationary, that's. You know, and um, so, but I think now that, you know, these commuter rail communities are going through this process. You know, there's gonna be quite, you know, quite a bit more conversation about things. Um. So, no, submit, you know, submit for compliance, but in the meantime, figure out how we, you know. How the town might be able to address item three. And be prepared to have an article on the town meeting warrant for um twenty twenty five.
I'm a little confused. How can you submit without town meeting approval?
No, submit for compliance. We, because we, we, the town has adopted something.
I see.
So the, the compliance model is not what town meeting adopted. Town meeting adopted the zoning and the map. So we can, you know, we can right now go through, address the issues and, you know, the comments that they made regarding the compliance model. That, that has nothing to do with town meeting. Address all those comments, submit what town meeting adopted for a formal compliance review. And, and then have them submit their, you know, their formal, you know, you know, their, their formal decision. All those other items can be addressed and maybe this is the last, the last issue. And, and, you know, the town can say, okay, well, we're, we're, we're trying to, you know, trying to resolve that. And it won't happen until town meeting twenty twenty-five.
I see.
I'm, and, and I'm also, you know, cur- currently, I have no idea how long it's taking for actual compliance reviews to happen. I mean, we submitted our pre-adoption February sixteen and didn't get a response back till July second.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
The only, the only caveat I will say is that Tristan is getting married on Saturday and will be away for two weeks. So during that time, I'm hoping to resolve the, the the other items with town council and have, have all of that written up for, you know, the, the board to review. But and then maybe if, you know, board members, you know, have, you know, thoughts or ideas, you can just email me different thoughts and ideas. So we can start looking.
We haven't heard anything from the attorney general yet as well.
No.
Okay. Cause I, I've been following up a little bit, looking at other towns that have, and there are most of them getting other comments from the attorney general, which are sort of like, this doesn't look right to us, but talk with your town council and be prepared at your next town meeting to make corrections. So it's, yeah.
And I think with that, that brings us to the end of our scheduled programming. I will open the floor up to public comment though. Keith Bergman.
Hi, Keith Bergman, fifty-six, White Ave, Chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, which has been a, and continues to be a big supporter of the planning board's efforts to, to bring Concord into compliance with the MBTA community zoning. I, I thought for a moment in the presentation that the, the that the, that the lead had been buried. I mean, the lead is this problem can only be fixed by a vote of town meeting. And that we, and that the discussion should be, what's the timetable for that? And I was assuming the discussion would be around, what's the timetable for having that town meeting prior to December thirty-first twenty twenty-four? And I was a little bit concerned that that issue wasn't raised. And I hope, I hope that as the planning board and the town itself proceed to to, to try to get compliance with MBTA community zoning, that that issue of the timetable be looked at. It wasn't, it wasn't my understanding or read, non-expert, that, that we could wait to act beyond December thirty-one unless we were willing to be, to be out of compliance with MBTA communities zoning, which I think with the town's precarious relationship with the state, especially around MCI Concord, I don't think we can afford to be out of compliance after the deadline. So I hope that issue gets raised and addressed. Thanks.
Thank you. And Carol Svoj.
Yeah. Hi, Carol Svoj, sixty-one, Bellknap Street. This is kind of a big surprise. MBTA, I thought we hired a state-approved consultant to help us with this. So I'm a little surprised that they were here to guide us and spent, you know, over a year. And, you know, we ended up with something in non-compliance and it's as a big expense to the town and you know, in time and effort for everybody involved. I don't know if there's any, you know, anything the state can do to compensate us for that, number one. And then number two, you know, the planning board obviously has a lot on their plate trying to fix the MBTA. There's the two forty Bs coming online. Elizabeth talked about the additional ADU changes that the state is going to be bringing forward. We've got two twenty-nine Main Street. You know, and with the, the two forty Bs and the MBTA, that's about fifteen hundred housing units that are coming forward. And then we have MCI, which is probably, you know, one of the biggest things out there, right? Which the governor wants housing there as well. So that is a lot of housing and a lot of big projects that, you know, the board needs to, to move forward and, you know, this year and next year. So, you know, looking at things like the combined business and changing parking, I think, you know, is just gonna confuse the matter. And with Sue Fleishman mentioning that, you know, wants to change the height in the town centers of buildings, you know, that is gonna have, you know, a, a lot of angst in the neighborhoods that surround those areas. You know, there was a lot of issues when the Throw Depot Crosby area was discussed again. So, you know, my suggestion is that you work on the big ticket items such as the MBTA and MCI and those kind of things, as opposed to some of these other, you know, ancillary projects.
Thank you for that comment. One thing I will, will say, just in response to it, you obviously have the right to keep repeating it, but that's roughly the same comment that's been brought up multiple times of basically putting pens down and not doing anything until other town projects are completed or moving forward. But that's not really a realistic goal based on what the planning board has set out to do. We are not involved in multiple of those other items in town. We are just going to continue to do what we think is appropriate and that will be adopted at town meeting or not. If, if the town itself feels we've gone too far, whether it's spending our time to plan combined business residents or, or other improvements to the, the zone bylaws and, and those things. But you're welcome to keep bringing that idea forward if you would like. I see Pamela Drit. Your name is up?
Thank you. Pamela Drit, thirteen Concord Green. So we thought we were gonna be rubber stamped by the state and then they came back and said, no, no, you did it wrong. I like Sue's comment that if a solution like increasing the height and thus the density ability would fix it, I think we should go ahead and do that. I don't think that people have a very good idea of the actual effect of higher building heights and an extra story in a, in a building as a by right allowance would have. And there are plenty of places in the town grandfathered in that we can look at to say, see, look, it isn't too high. What, what is, do you guys now have to redo the plan and bring it to town meeting by a certain deadline now?
Right now, it, it's in the hands of professional staff to determine what options are available. They are going back to their consultants as well as their GIS teams and determining what next steps could be. So we, we don't really have a next step or by a certain timeframe type thing at this moment.
No, please let us, keep us informed like you are doing. And also I hope you can, I think we need to take a look at all of our building requirements on a kind of a regular basis in preparing ourselves for the future so that we don't lag behind. Thank you.
I'm not seeing any other comments. So with that, I think that's the end of our regular scheduled session. I don't see anything else unless Elizabeth, you have anything more you want to add at the last minute. Awesome. So with that, I will do, I need to call vote in order to, don't mind, for, or just gavel us out.
You, as chairman, you can declare with no further business, adjourn the meeting.
Awesome. So with no further business, we are adjourned. Thank you all.